I told Nick that I had a very difficult time understanding that gentleman last time. And I think I would have been more comfortable had I been able to under-- I mean, I got some of it.
Yeah.
But I had a difficult time. And also, my other thing is, this is not in our budget.
Correct.
Okay? So, I don't know how the rest of you feel. I'm gonna speak first before the rest of you, and then you go and tell me what you think. But we've always gone by budget. It's in the budget, and so if it's something we really want to do, why don't we add it to the budget next year?
That's exactly what I had down.
Okay.
I had downed how much, and should we see it in a budget before we add it?
Well, that's how we've always done things. We always budget and do it that way. That's how we've always-- as long as--
It was just kind of a thing that came up with them guys, you know? It wasn't a--
It's not a bad thing, but it's not in the budget.
Yep.
Certainly, and I'm not pushing it, but the electric fund is looking at having a $130,[60.57][60.57]$135,000 surplus.
I think when we look at our budget next time, we add that then.
Yep, that we add it to the budget.
Yep. That's what I think.
That's how I feel, too?
Yep.
Okay, that takes care of that. Now, let's move on to the-- Nick's going to the APPA conference. What's everyone's come--
Proposing.
Proposing, going to the conference. Okay. In here, you said that you would-- we would only have to pay for the conference expense, but then you're-- we're paying you, you're salary while you're gone, too.
It is work-related, yes. If it wasn't work-related, I'd happily take vacation in a heartbeat or just not go. But since it is an electrical conference, it's through Compass, which we are a member of, it is job-related.
Okay. What's everyone's thought?
I'm okay with it.
I'm not okay with it, because I think you just started. I would like to see you here a while longer before we send you on a conference like that.
And that's kind of how I feel, too. I think we're on the right track here. We're getting to know each other. Things are going well, but it's still early in the-- in our-- in your employment with us, and I'm kind of with Ralph that, you know, I'm not saying you can't go to conferences, but it's still early, because you still are only like, little greater than six months.
And I get that this was a big one. I mean, this is really out of the norm for conferences that I would really look at attending, because my spouse was going and the opportunity there, I figured--
And that's fine. It's okay that you brought it up, but I'm kind of with Ralph, so it's the consensus that--
And I'm perfectly fine not going.
Okay.
Josh, what do you think?
Well, I think that's fine. That's okay with Nick.
Yeah. I can see both sides of it.
Yep.
Okay. So, you know, when another one comes up, bring it up, okay? Okay, then moving on to Judy Rice, on number nine, who's going to talk to us about caregiver support group and provide some information for us.
Howdy.
Hi.
I'm a newcomer.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. I've been here since August 25th, originally from the Dassel area, lived in Niagara Falls for about three years, came back to Dassel, looked for a home, and discovered I would get more value here. Prayed, dear God, if you could, I really would like a good library, an outdoor pool, and maybe a baseball field. Here we are.
We got it.
Yeah, I'm very blessed. So are you. I know you all know that, or you wouldn't be serving this community. But with all of that said, there is something that might make it even a little better. And it has to do with, I'm going to pass out some passouts, and if you could, just hang onto them, and then we'll go through them together. The top one has to do with a flyer that I am hoping to put in all of the businesses in town, door-to-door, and the rest of the bottom of the information has to do with who we are. So, you should get two pieces, a single sheet drum and a pad of package. So, basically, I am a volunteer, and I am with a volunteer program. If you look at the top of the sheet that has all the information in it, you'll see three logos. They are AmeriCorps, LegacyCorps, which is actually through the University of Maryland, and Lutheran Social Services. These are joint programs and funding sources, and we are a volunteer program. And we are a support and respite program, meaning respite means-- the word respite means take a break. And we provide help for caregivers and their loved ones. Let's pretend you are a child, and you have a father who might have Alzheimer's. He is at home. You are at home taking care of him. You're basically there confined to be where he is, and you don't get a break. So, we step in and help out. It's usually not the children. It's quite often the spouses, and we'll get to that in a minute in terms of who the demographics of this group is. But we are trained volunteers, and we provide the non-medical in-home caregiving services, and we also do the out-of-home, which is the group support services. We-- our people are 60 years or older. There was a question the other day, can you help out with my mom who takes care of her grandchildren? No. It's for people who are 60 or older, and they have conditions that require continuous supervision or care. Our history, Lutheran Social Services, we've been around for-- since 1992, starting out with two counties, we're now up to 22. If you want to turn over two pages, I want you to see the map, and the map will show you that up in the corner of Minnesota, we serve northwest corner, but also central Minnesota. And there we are at the bottom, and there's some names there, and you'll see that our lady, who is our coordinator, Sarah Deering, has McLeod and Renville. And then Barb Asleben has three counties, and Sarah Anderson has two. So, we have this whole little area in south-central Minnesota. Our services, as I mentioned, we provide the respite services for caregivers, letting them take a break. And we also provide support for caregivers. Right now, every third Wednesday at the nursing home, we have a caregiver support group, and they're wonderful. It's a wonderful group. They're very supportive of one another. They also have people there who maybe have lost somebody, so it sort of serves two purposes. And finally, the last thing that we do is we share information. It's amazing that as we go through life, there are lots of things we don't know, and suddenly you have a spouse, and he may have Alzheimer's. And it's very rare that we know all about Alzheimer's. And so, we help our people by sharing with them information on the various conditions, what to expect along the way, and so on. And there's even really cool things, not only the sharing of info, but the classes and the iPad project has really been successful. If you turn to page two, you'll see the needs. By 2025, there's gonna be 62 million caregivers, or excuse me, senior citizens, and the fastest-growing category is in the 100-plus category. So, it's a greater need for caregivers. And if you were to pay all those spouses who are giving care, taking care of their loved ones, the value would be 450 billion, and that's two times more than the combined cost of nursing home and home health care. So, it's a tremendous area of service with tremendous value. Of these caregivers, 17% of them, or 11 million, are caregivers caring for vets. Now, if you remember the logos on the front page, LegacyCorps, the middle one, through the University of Maryland, they give us our funding to take care of vets. They are not the only group we take care of, but we definitely have a need there. And just to give you an example, just keep going down through the bullets. The majority of caregivers are spouses, most of them are women, but for vets, the burden of care is much greater, two times more, because there are more severe conditions with vets and more ADOs, the activities of daily living, so dressing, bathing, and so forth. The emotional stress is greater, the physical, the financial. 30% of family members who care for a loved one with Alzheimer's will die before the care recipient, and then caring for someone with dementia has been shown to impact the caregiver for three years longer after their caregiving ends. So, it's a big thing. I'm astounded as I go through town, and I'm meeting people. I'm a little bit at a disadvantage, but my ministers, the other people I've spoken with, do not even know that we exist. And AmeriCorps is a very, very big program. Okay, we'll just continue here, because you've got some other business to attend to. But just to let you know, you'll see that 97% or greater, all of their needs were met, whether it's learning, reducing their stress, reducing their burden. And they also have mentioned that they believe that they'll be able to keep their loved ones in their homes longer. And so, if you think of the three S's, number one S is to support the caregivers and their family members. Number two S is to reduce the stress, and number three S is to sustain them so they can stay in their home longer. This tells a little bit about AmeriCorps. We have two jobs. We don't just take care of the people and provide the respite, but we also have to look for volunteers. And we're at a point right now where we're kind of midway, approaching the midway mark, so we're not actively seeking volunteers at this point. It coincides, the year coincides with the school year, so it goes from September through October. And that means, look at the advantage-- I'm gonna go through these bullets in terms of what we-- what the AmeriCorps program and mission are. We support the local, state, and national organizations, involves Americans in results-driven service, and we serve for one year at a time, up to four years. We get a little bit of a living allowance. It's for gas. And finally, this is the big one, and I didn't know about this when I started, and it's a very big incentive for people that want to-- are thinking of joining. It's a $1,500 scholarship that you can use, or your child can use, or your grandchild can use. And if your kids have big college bills, as mine does, it's a very big incentive. And finally, the little acronym at the bottom, C-A-R-E, Communities Are Strengthened. It is action-oriented. It does allow for response ability, the ability to respond, and finally, it does expand the opportunities. One thing that I did put in here also, and I'm not gonna go through this, because I know your time is limited, but there is a book. Has-- I know Nick has read the book, but has anyone heard of or read the book, The Blue Zones? I think it's rather incredible that we take care of our people, but wouldn't it be nice if instead of attacking it on the backside, we were looking at it from the front side and doing things that make us live longer? And so, I just summarized this book for you, and it's really a cool book, and if you have a chance, do read it, because it talks about not only the way we eat, but the way we believe. And part of believing is sharing who we are with others, and that strengthens the community, and that's why I'm so blessed to feel a part of this community. That's in there, is a bonus. It summarizes the blue zones, and you can look at it for yourself, and I do really, really heartily recommend reading the book if you can. One thing I did not know is, the guy that wrote the book, Bettner, he decided, after he found these five areas in the world where people live longer, and they all do certain things, they eat right, they exercise, they believe, et cetera, but he said, I wonder if we could do this elsewhere to make other blue zones. And guess what town he ended up picking as his second test site? Albert Lee. It's in your package. Read the book, start with the package. It's really a cool one. Be sure you get the last edition, though. And finally, the last one really has to do with a personal thing of mine in terms of who we are and what we were created to be, and that's, again, for your own personal time and review. Does anyone have any questions? Because I am going to go through the town. I'm gonna do one of the blue zone things, walk more, and deliver all of these, when I get my things in the mail, they're being reprinted. I'm gonna go from store to store and business to business and put them up and hand them out and talk to the creatures. That's what I'm doing now, talking to little Bible study groups. Anybody have any other ideas for me? I'm very, very welcome to suggestions, but if one person tells another and tells another, then we will make it known, so. Phone numbers on there if you do have any questions.
Can I get one of those?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Can I get one of those?
You didn't get one?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for speaking out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about anything on the consent agenda, or any comments about any one of them that are there? There's quite a few. For the minutes, we have payments. Any questions on the payments? I guess there was one on the equipment repairs for the farm-- to farm plan of 5440, and the bills from-- who's that for?
First Systems Technology on the equipment repairs. That was repairs to one of the lift stations that we hired.
Okay. I guess just kind of look at the big ones.
Yep.
Okay. If none, any questions? None? Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
A second?
A second.
Motion by Ralph, second by Brad, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Then moving on to new business, to consider approval of the City Hall network hardware upgrade purchase. Nick, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, I shall. When I did the presentation, one of the earlier meetings, talking about the switch over to RS fiber, I had talked about needing to do some hardware upgrades in order to achieve that end goal. Right now, we have RS fiber in, but it's working, but we still have that siloed structure that I talked about before. And I had spoken at that time that I'd be getting a quote from Harlan Technologies to do that hardware upgrade, and then I have received that back, and you can see there the total cost would be $2,927 to complete that upgrade, and I would-- since we're still gonna be realizing about $6,000 worth of savings this year from the switch to RS fiber, that is the source of funding I would recommend that be used to pay for the hardware upgrade. So, in the end, we'd still be saving $3,000 this year.
Anyone have questions about this? I think we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting. It's ready up here.
Yep.
Just give it to me.
Brad?
That's good. We talked about it in the last--
Yep. Okay. So, then I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, motion made by Josh, second by Brad, to approve the hardware upgrade purchase for $2,927. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Then we move on to the check acceptance policy for the frontier bar. Is that in front of us?
Yep, the liquor committee had met last Thursday to review this. Right now, we just-- our liquor policy is, as I had shown, that red slip that's hanging on the back of the cashier, and it's kind of been piecemealed together over time, so it had been brought up as a good idea to try to come up with something more formal. Drafted this, brought it before the liquor committee. Liquor store staff did have a chance to review this as well, so they had to get-- they gave their input on tweaks to this to best fit the operations. Liquor store sought and recommended approval to move forward with accepting it at city council here.
Question I have is on, under general provisions of this policy, as follows. Number four--
Yeah.
When it talks about a valid driver's license, if you're someone like my mother with no driver's license, but you have a state-issued ID, should we say that in there?
I think you should add on that it's an ID. Valid driver's license or ID.
Or, I would say, state-issued ID.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Not just like, hey, I work--
Then I have another question on the number six. Okay, so someone writes a check for $40, and they've just spent $10, okay? Now, how are you gonna be assured that they're gonna stay there and spend the other $30?
You're not.
No.
You just hope--
You just hope they will?
You're not gonna let somebody write a check for $100 on their way out the door.
We've been having some instances where people would want to get extra money by cashing a check, so they-- well, we require a purchase, so they buy a $2.50 bottle of pop, and they write out the check for $102.50. This is aimed at--
Controlling that.
Controlling that.
But are we putting our staff in a position where they're trying to enforce something that's almost impossible to enforce?
The intent of this was trying to be more flexible with that than restrictive about it. We're trying to-- it's hard to write the policy like, see, you have to be for the exact amount, because we do have people who come in and write checks over for pull tabs, things of that nature, or some extra cash to buy, you know, food, drinks, things like that. We want to allow that sort of behavior, but we also wanted to sway the-- using the frontier bar as a bank, essentially. So, this was the attempt to meet in the middle with that.
I wish that we just get rid of checks altogether.
Yeah. Comments, anyone? Is everyone--
I think there's language in here that's hard to enforce.
Yeah.
I think you're, you know, I think we ought to just be honest with what we're doing. We-- the checks are, you know, we-- the intent is that they're for what you're gonna spend there. But do we, you know, do we want to get into an argument? Because it says, the vast majority must-- well, what's vast majority? Is that $51 of 100, or is that 80 of 100? And are we leaving that up for discussion there for the person, or, I mean--
That was intentionally left vague as that flexibility factor. I wasn't even sure how else to write it to be, you know, if I get too strict on it. And that was-- number six was the difficult part in this policy.
I could see.
That's why it has more words in it.
Yeah, that's right.
Hard parts always have those words. And that's why I tried to provide the example, there's a guy gives some general guidance on how to apply it. The intent is for most of the money, but yeah, if they end up only spending 10 bucks out of the 40, it's gonna have some case-by-case basis in it.
This is more just to give the bartenders something.
Something to go by?
Yeah. Otherwise, they're just--
Do we have a lot of bad checks?
Deer in the headlights.
Yes.
What's that?
Do we have a lot of bad checks?
Not a ton, I handle here and there.
Okay, not a lot.
Not a lot, no.
Okay. Okay, so, my question is, are you happy with this the way it is here? I think it's what Josh said, we're just-- it's a little bit of guidance for the bartenders.
There's an ATM in the bars, Mary.
Yeah.
They still do it, though. I don't-- I just--
Brad wants to get rid of checks.
Yeah.
They can use the ATM machine.
Charge them, and quit using checks.
I'd go--
Cash with an ATM machine.
Okay, so what do you wanna do with this?
I'm fine with it. Just put that other state ID--
Yep.
Line on there.
Okay, so do I have a motion to accept this policy?
I'll make a motion to accept.
With the addition of--
Or other state--
Other state--
Or other state issued ID.
Other state issued IDs, okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Josh, second by Brad, to approve the check acceptance policy with that addition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, now, we're gonna go to the personnel policy amendment, for step increases, and I think there's, um, I think, Nick, you said you just added this on the bottom here?
The portion in yellow is the added. I wanted to include the whole general statement portion, so you had a context for where it sits within that whole general statement, but the yellow would be the added language that would go in there.
Anybody have any questions about this?
Kind of discussed that last time. We wanted a little clarification in there.
Yeah, so we got it? We're all happy?
I'm good.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, then I need a motion to accept that.
I'll make the motion to accept.
The first, okay. A second?
Aye.
Okay, a motion made by Brad, second by Josh, to approve the personnel policy amendment for the step increases. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. And moving on to number on 19, it's for the back pay for the former city administrator. That was listed in here. Is it not? What did you say?
It isn't a Friday update.
Right. But I think that you actually spoke with the league.
Yep. I had contacted the league of Minnesota. City spoke with their expert HR staff, and I have a couple other contacts in the field I conferred with them as well, and it was the consensus that in a situation where you have a back pay occur, if there are employees who leave employment for any reason, they are included in that action as well.
Any discussion on that matter? Okay? If not, then I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion is made by Josh, second by Ralph, to approve the back pay for the former city administrator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. With that, we're moving on to the Clark mosquito spray, mosquito management thing, and is this pretty much the same price that we had last year, or is it?
There is, has been an increase, an increase of $210 from 2017. Last year was $4,110, and the option we would choose, which was done last year, would be the $4,320 option.
And that's what we've had all along, right? I mean, we've been doing the same thing, right? Every year?
Last couple years, I think.
Yeah.
Yep, last two years.
Then usually, just send them an-- if you send them an email, let them know like when the city celebration is, they'll try to come like that week.
Yep.
Just so it's-- they kind of schedule it around that time.
I think everybody, you know, I think it's a great thing, because we don't have, it kind of takes care of a lot of our bugs. I know some people probably don't like it, but--
The bugs.
The bugs. I don't like the bugs, but some people don't like--
I hear a lot of complaints from my button contingency.
Okay, any comments on this? Any questions? If not, then I need a motion to approve the Clark environmental mosquito spraying service for 2018 for the total of $4,320.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Josh, second by Brad, to approve the mosquito spraying contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Now, we're moving on to Nick.
Thank you, Mayor. As I've been giving updates on working on National Night Out celebration for this year, the CNC has said they would be willing to move their summer celebration, because it's very close to what the National Night Out would be, which is that first--
Tuesday.
First Tuesday in August. So, CNC has said they're on board, was switching that over, gearing up for more food to be served, so they'll do their music event, so we'll get that to coincide. Days of Thunder Committee is on board as well. Somebody's got the little train they can pull behind with a lawn mower, some little kids' activities there. Spoken to the sheriff's department, they are looking to do a K-9 unit, to get them down to do that as well. But then, it's just nice to have these organizations really kind of kicking in to help out, to put this together. Ideally, we have it down at Memorial Park here, say we do a free night of swimming to bring out the families and the kids for something to do beforehand, and then we'll just be bringing out all the fire EMS, speaking of EMS, we have the ambulance out front for anybody that wants to see it, bringing out all the equipment. Even had a couple farmers inquire if they would bring in some equipment for the kids and families to see. And it's just really the community getting together with the fire EMS police staff, commiserating, having some food, seeing the equipment, and just having a pretty good evening out of it. Brittany Cotner started at the liquor store a couple weeks ago. She is off this week. She's on her honeymoon, so we wish her well on that. She'll be back on Monday. Enthusiastic about the job, liking it so far. She got to meet the liquor committee on Thursday. Josh can attest, she was pretty enthusiastic about things and had some--
Good ideas.
Yep, had some ideas already that she'd like to look at implementing, so we're looking forward to that. HRA is completing its transition in management.
forward to that. HRA is completing its transition in management. South View has been taken over by Van, Van Binsbergen of Montevideo, and we are still waiting to hear back from HUD on approval of Dennis Hoffbeck for Fairview Apartments. Hopefully, we'll hear back in the next couple of weeks on that. EDA is working on a handful of programs. The programs that existed, but we're kind of taking them, giving them update. Then we'll market those as they go forward. So once we have those, they should be dealing with that at the next meeting, tomorrow morning actually. That's all I really have to say for updates. Ah, no, and then today, Joel and I met with Andy Karen of Bolton and Mink, and we did some, we went over the preliminary plan reviews for the street project, made some adjustments, minor adjustments here and there, some things to look into and check on. And we're looking to have those plans and specs before council for review and approval at the April meeting. And then if the plan and specs are, are good, which they ought to be, then we would authorize bidding. The bidding would go out and then we would have bids back ready for approval at the May meeting. In that same timeframe, we will be working on the bonding that is associated with this project as well. So those are some items that you'll see coming up. So that's what I have for my report. And I'll go on to the financials for February. For the general fund, again, normal expected expenditures. Last month, we had the ambulance come out, but other than that, it was normal. And again, a pretty normal, stable month for things. On the general fund revenue side, reporting on the ambulance revenues and the garbage collection revenues, which are coming in on target, which is nice to see. For the water fund, again, normal and expected expenditures, nothing out of the line there. Everything's coming in well on the revenues side of things. Revenues are coming in slightly under budgeted amounts, but when we get to the summer months with watering and things like that, we should see a resurgence and come back on target. For the wastewater fund, normal expected expenses once again, and water fund revenues are stable and on track for their budgeted amounts so far. For the storm sewer fund, again, normal expected expenditures and sales are, again, stable and on track for budgeted amounts for the last two months. On the electric fund end of things, normal unexpected expenses once again, nothing out of the ordinary and on target for all expenses. And the electric sales are coming in above target for budgeted amounts. We're still in those winter months, we're still getting some probably electric use on heating, so we'll see how those even out come spring when people use some of that, their appliances less for the heating and cooling, and then we'll see how those revenues come in for the rest of the year. On the natural gas fund end of thing, end of things, normal expected expenses and natural gas sales are coming in above target for budget amounts. Again, like with electric, but probably heavier for natural gas. Once, once the winter quits, then we really drop down in our natural gas usage for the city because we're not using it to heat homes and things of that nature. But then it'll pick up again in the fall. On the liquor fund, for February, sales are coming in slightly below budget, but like January, February's not a high sales month. Still coming off the Christmas, New Year's burnout, but as we get towards those summer months, we'll get holidays again where that gets used more. Plus, people just, will start buying more beer for their summer grill outs. And so before, I'd just been showing the investments, but I wanted to show investments and the cash balances associated, so you have a total picture of what kind of cash and investments we're sitting on between each fund. So I've updated that, the general fund, and I won't go through each one. You can read each one of those. What you'll see over time is general fund will go down over time, and then about July, June, July, we'll get our influx of cash from our local government aid and our tax settlements, and then the general fund will spike back up again, and then we use that over the next six months. And that's kind of the general fund cycles, a six-month type of thing. Six months over the expenses, followed by a big influx of revenue. The water and the rest of the utilities, what you'll generally see is increasing over time, and then once bond payments go out, then they'll have a quick drop, but then you'll see them increase over time again as well. And the liquor fund will have inflow as the sales go in that. So that's a picture on that. Any questions on any of that? After that, that's what I got.
Okay. Joe, your turn.
We had a water main break down on Second Street, or Second Ave, actually. Went pretty good. Went quick, they found a leak right away, so it was, did take two entirely long to have a few blocks without water. We generated power the other day when we had a wonderful power outage from the 69 line we had down. Yeah, I think it was about two hours I've been generating for it, but other than that, just some wonderful snow removal and been fixing some picnic tables for the parks because a lot of them were deteriorated and rotted, so been fixing some of those and doing some equipment maintenance.
You now have an external key for the school?
Correct. And we also have a key for the school, so we can get in if there's an outage, we can get into it again. Yep, that worked out good, so.
Yeah, sorry I didn't answer that call.
That's all right. Then I just thought about it like, shoot, that's right, we got a key now. So that worked out good.
Scott?
Okay, I've got a couple of things. Last month, we had 164 calls. A little warmer than the one before, so I'll probably start picking up since it's warmer. And I had a slight meeting with some of the part-timers. Right now, their PRA, their retirement, if they're qualified for it, some aren't. There's a couple that aren't qualified, but after $5100, you're qualified. Then the city has to either put it into the police and fire fund or the combined fund. Well, right now, it gets put into the combined fund unless we pass a resolution saying they can be put into the police and fire. Well, I've got one employee that works here that gets PRA, and this is his only job, and if he pretty much told me if he doesn't get switched to the police and fire, he's going someplace else. That, because you get credit per month. I don't know if you guys know anything about PRA, but the police and fire PRA actually pays a little higher interest than the combined because it's got a shorter lifespan of, you know, for cops to be working. All I ask is for anybody that's qualified for PRA, if we could pass a resolution for those people that are qualified, that has been qualified, that's on the roster, be put into it going forward. And if they were qualified for in the past, that they pay for their retirement in the past out of their pocket. That's something we can do.
This is a good tool. I think Scott brought it up to me and we talked about it. And right now, what happens is by default, any part-time police officers go into the coordinated plan, and they don't get any service benefit, time towards their retirement for the police and fire unless you specifically pass a resolution that puts them in the police and fire. So they have just been defaulting into the coordinated fund. So it's a recruitment and retention tool for part-time police officers because it affects their retirement, and a police officer may want to part-time for a while, but if they're not getting that credit, they may go someplace else to go ahead and do it.
Yeah, it makes their, it'll make their high five go higher, but if it's in the combined fund, it won't do nothing for their retirement.
On the financial end of things, the police and fire, if there is a greater cost to the city versus the coordinated plan, but we're talking, for the part-time help, we're talking maybe a couple hundred dollars, two, $300 on the year difference for budgeting purposes.
It's not like they're working full-time.
Yep.
It's just every month, they can get a credit with the state. You know, they don't even have to work. Like that month, they just, they're here working.
Because they're on the roster.
Because they're on the roster.
So discussing here, council would like me to bring that resolution to the next meeting for consideration. I would be happy to put that together.
I think so. You guys agree?
Yep.
Ralph? Yep.
And we also talked about holiday. Cops are required to work every, every holiday. Well, not every cop, but there has to be a cop working on the holidays. And Danny and I, we only get, we work 12-hour shifts and we only get eight hours of holiday. And I would like to change. And if anything, we'd like the same benefits as the street guys get. Right now, we get eight hours of holiday pay and four hours of comp. If we work eight-hour shift on holiday. And our holiday is only observed the day of the holiday, which is, doesn't matter to me. I'd rather have that than the day that's observed like by the national, whatever it is. So that's a policy, and I'm just bringing it forward to see if we can get the same benefits as the city guys, the street guys, or any other city employee instead of the benefits we got because we only get eight hours of holiday pay. And having that in mind, the part-timers, if they work, they don't get holiday pay. And they're, they might pick a shift up on a holiday. So, you know, it's not like I can't have somebody working. And if we're not around, they're probably not going to want to work on the holiday if they don't get holiday pay. So I want to bring that forward to see if we can allow part-time police officers to get holiday pay.
The hours you work in a week are how many?
Me? Forty hours.
Forty hours a week, but you do it in 12-hour shifts?
Well, not every week. We do, we do 80 hours in two weeks, but we're, we, we don't get overtime unless we're 86 hours. And that's something else we talked about changing too, because that was way in the past. And the city guys, if they worked over 80 hours, they get overtime, and we only get overtime at 86, over 86.
I think you need to bring the policies to us. You need to look at these.
We have to refer this to the personnel committee first.
Yep.
So that's something we talked about changing too, but when I talked to Nick about him, he didn't want to do it yet because it would, it would screw the budget up because right now, we can hardly even get anybody to come in to work. Because everybody, all, all cops are short, all police departments, so everybody's trying to find good cops to work, and it's hard to find them, so. So Danny and I have been working obviously more than 80 hours because we always see ourselves working, but...
Well, there's, we definitely need to look at it.
Yeah, let's, have a personnel committee meeting, come up with a plan.
Works for me, thank you.
We'll try to get it done before, we'll try to look at it.
For the next meeting? I think it's myself correct, I think.
Oh, good. Good, oh, good.
Oh, and we also have another employee on the fire department. He was a past employee, but he moved back to town, Justin Lynch. So we need that approved for the fire department. And Joel, tour, have you guys tour the ambulance room down here?
Justin Lynch.
Any questions? Oh, we have to get that approved, I guess.
Justin?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm asking for a motion to approve Justin to be added to the fire department.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a process that that goes through? Or we just say he's in and then he's in?
Well, he...
He was on for a while.
He was on.
He has all the training.
So he's been, you know, he's gone through all of the...
He certified as an EMT and a fireman, so.
Yeah, so he's had the training.
All he had to do is fill out the application again.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
That was second?
I'll second.
Motion by Josh, seconded by Brad to approve Justin to be added to the fire department, EMT department. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, take a step. Okay, then moving on, we have the list of building permits, committee minutes, and the small cities development grant, program grant thing. And are there any council member, any concerns, any, any comments?
Liquor store, said hired two more part-time employees.
Yep.
So hopefully, we can get away from them to shut down, hopefully.
Yeah.
Yep, they will begin training actually tomorrow night.
Well, it just happened that, you know, with the opening, it was just one of those circumstances, couldn't be really helped.
No, it couldn't be.
Before I came, I have one thing. Before I came tonight, and I, Jim Linsell called me, I don't know if everyone knows Jim or not, but he's been really active. He was a former, he's from Fairfax, he was really active in Fort Ridgely thing. And now he's been working with the baseball association for putting this museum together down there. And tonight, he called me and he was telling me that the depot needs to have a roof put on. And the ladies, and I don't know if you all got flyers or not, there was a flyer that came through, we're trying to raise $40,000, okay? And Jim said, you know, these little ladies have worked all these years, and he said, I don't know how we're going to raise $40,000, but he said, I'm wondering, he said, you know, we may come to the city and ask if there's, if we can get some funds from the city. I said, I would bring it up tonight to you guys, so, you know, it's just a thing to think about. That's what he was saying tonight anyway. And we also have EDA meeting in the morning, and I said I would mention it then, and I'd get back to him and just think about how you see. We can see how much they do raise, but I think, you know, it is an asset for our community. And, and they really put it, it's really a nice, I don't know if you've seen it, Nick, but they've done a lot of work in there, and it's really nice. It's, it's, it's a nice museum. So think about it. Nick said he had a thought that maybe there's some grants or something that you were going to look into.
We're currently going through the small cities development grant, and there may be funding available on the commercial end of things, which could be applied for just such a project like this. So I'm working with United Community Action Partnership as they're, they're the administrators of the small cities program to see where that may fit in there.
So I just said I mentioned it, so you can think about it and see where it goes.
What are they all planning on doing with...
Just putting a roof on.
With the hail damage, right?
I think so, yeah. He didn't say that, but I...
They have to do some...
I said, that's exactly what I said. Well, first I thought he was talking about the museum down at the baseball park. He said, we need a new roof, and he said, they're trying to raise $40,000, and I said, Jim, that seems awfully high. And he goes, well, they got two quotes, and then I, and then he started talking about the museum, and I said, oh, so you're talking about the roof over there? And he said, yes, but he said, they did two quotes, and they were both right around that.
Yeah, he said something that the insurance only paid 10 grand.
Okay, and he didn't tell me that. I finally just said, I gotta go, I have a meeting, and so I didn't get to finish the conversation.
Yeah, because he's got a Gulf Fun Beach page. He set up a Gulf Fun Beach.
Oh, okay.
And explains it all on there.
Okay.
They're also looking at how changing some windows and this, and some of the electrical as well, some of, some of the electrical.
Okay, well, he just mentioned the roof, that's obvious.
That's the biggest thing, that's critical.
Okay, okay. Just for your information, anybody have anything else?
I have two things I'd like to mention. One is that you've seen by the school, we got a big chunk of dirt dug up there that we're going to put in a pollinator patch and some tall grass prairie. The planting dates for that are May 23rd, 24th, and 25th, whichever of those days is the nicest. You're all welcome to come to that if you are around. We're probably going to cook a hot dog or something too for the kids that do it. And the second thing I just want to mention to Nick or about Nick is, I really like the Friday emails.
I do too.
The little memos, that's really, I really appreciate that. I just wanted to say that here.
Thank you.
I like them too. It really keeps us up to date because it's hard to keep, for all of us to keep up, to be kept up on all the things that are happening.
Yep, I like those every couple of weeks or so when we have things happen, just, you know, it's a month between...
I also like that you email us when, you know, like the water main broke or something's going on, because if someone says something to us, then we're informed, so we know what's going on. Okay, if there's nothing else, then I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Brad, seconded by Josh to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.